Good evening. Welcome to the May 22, 2017 Troy City Council Meeting. We are pleased this evening to have Councilman McCowen lead us with the invocation. If you would please rise for that and then remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Heavenly Father, we thank you for gathering us here together today. We thank you for the beautiful weather that we are enjoying and for the freedom to speak publicly in this country of yours. We ask that tonight we have a peaceful and productive conversation and that we come to a mutually agreeable path for all residents. In Jesus' name, amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Councilman McCowen. Troy City Council Meeting is now called to order. The roll call, Ms. Dixon.
Mayor Slater.
Here.
Councilmember Abraham.
Here.
Councilmember Baker.
Here.
Councilmember Henderson.
Here.
Mayor Protem Hoderek.
Here.
Councilmember McCown.
Here.
Councilmember Pennington.
Here.
All present. First on the agenda are certificates of recognition and special presentations. We have four this evening. C1 is a proclamation to proclaim May 2017 as Asian and Pacific Islander Heritage Month in the city of Troy. So I would like to come to the podium and make this presentation to all of the members that are here this evening from the Troy -- Global Troy Advisory Committee. If they would meet me at the podium, please.
Good evening.
Thank you for coming here this evening and being part of our council meeting this evening. I'm honored to be here this evening to present this proclamation on behalf of Asian and Pacific Islander Heritage Month for May of 2017. And I'd like to read this into the record for you. Whereas the vast diversity of languages, religions, and culture traditions of Asian-Americans and Pacific Islanders continues to strengthen the fabric of American society. And whereas, from the arrival of the first Asian and Pacific Islander immigrants more than 150 years ago to those who arrive today, as well as those native in Hawaiian Islands and to our Pacific Island territories, they all possess the common purpose of fulfilling the American dream and leading a life bound by the American ideals of life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness. And whereas during Asian and Pacific Islander Heritage Month, we remember the challenges and celebrate the achievements that divine our history. Asian-Americans and Pacific Islanders have endured and overcome hardships and headaches. And whereas amidst the struggles, Asian-Americans and Pacific Islanders have contributed in great and significant ways to all aspects of society. They have created work of literature and art, thrived as American athletes, and prospered in the world of academia. Asian-Americans and Pacific Islanders have played a vital role in our nation's economic and technological growth by establishing successful enterprises and pushing the limits of science. And whereas they are serving in positions of leadership within the government more now than ever before, and along with all of our great servicemen and women, they have defended and served the United States with valor from threats of home and abroad. So now therefore be it resolved that the mayor and the city council of the city of Troy hereby proclaim the month of May 2017 as Asian and Pacific Islander Heritage Month, and be it further resolved that we invite all Troy residents to recognize and celebrate vital roles of the Asian-Americans and Pacific Islanders who have played an important part of our nation's history, as well as their outstanding achievements today and into the future. Presented this 22nd day of May 2017, it's signed by myself, all members of the city council, it's my honor to present this proclamation for Asian and Pacific Islander Heritage Month 2017. Congratulations.
Thank you.
for the months of March and April 2017. I see Community Affairs Director Cindy Stewart is at the podium and will make a presentation.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. It's my pleasure tonight. I want to introduce you to Dick Snyder, who's the President of the Board for Troy People Concern, and the employees for the month of March and April. We chose Troy People Concern, and we have a check for $455 for that very worthwhile organization.
Thank you, Cindy.
I'll just say a couple of words. As Cindy mentioned, my name's Dick Snyder. I'm President of Troy People Concern. Troy People Concern was established as a nonprofit in Troy 41 years ago with the purpose of assisting those families that are in a short-term crisis situation. Now usually there's many reasons, but most frequently it's the crisis is due to a sudden loss of income or a medical condition or an emergency. It's not unusual for families to approach us that are on the verge of eviction or a possible utility shut-off. Some of the programs that we support are a food pantry, we give rides to senior citizens to and from doctor and dental appointments, we have school backpack program, 100 to 200 backpacks every fall full of school supplies, and we have the holiday gift baskets for Easter, Christmas, and Thanksgiving. So I want to thank all the city employees that so generously donated to this cause, Casual for Dress, right? Okay? And thank you for your donation and thank you for your time. Thank you for letting me address you.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Thank you. Thank you. Paul Featherstone from SafeBilt Building -- our SafeBilt Building Official will present a check to the Troy Police and Fire Benevolent Fund. Welcome, Paul.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor. Members of council.
Good evening.
About a month ago, I received an email from the chief regarding this outstanding opportunity to give back to the community and give back to this organization. It wasn't originally in my outreach budget. As you know, we do scholarships, and I will see it another month or so about that. But I contacted the corporate office, and they agreed 100% that we should be giving to this organization. Hope I can make this an annual. But again, they agreed, and within just a day or two, I had a check cut for them, so.
Thanks, Paul.
Chief.
Thank you.
On behalf of SafeBilt, I would like to present you both with this check for $500. Thank you very much.
Thanks.
I'm pleased to be the Vice President of the Troy Police and Fire Benevolent Association. We sincerely appreciate this sign of support from SafeBilt. Paul's been a great partner with us, him and his people. We really appreciate all they do. It'll help us as we make donations to the families of fallen police and fire -- fallen police officers and firefighters, and unfortunately it's becoming way too common of occurrence. Thank you.
Thank you.
And on behalf of TPEFA, I'm the Secretary, and we also, I believe people don't realize too, we help any Troy City employees that find themselves, it could be a crisis situation due to a medical, you know, just we've had different things with, it could be a disaster at their home, something related to them or their family. So on behalf of the association, we thank you as well.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The League of Women Voters President Pam Brady will present the 2017 They Represent You pamphlet to City Council.
Good evening, Mayor.
Nice to see you.
This is what we're talking about tonight. Good evening, Mayor, council, city staff, and fellow citizens. The League of Women Voters of Troy Area is part of a national nonpartisan organization whose purpose is to promote political responsibility through informed and active participation of citizens in government. To that end, Karen Fabian, Kim Kelly, Veronica Daly, Reezy Cavallier -- hi Reezy, she's in rehab at the moment. Mike Brady and myself, Pam Brady, have compiled this They Represent You brochure, which is a listing of local, county, state, and national officials which represent Troy residents. It includes who holds what office, their term of office, salaries, phone numbers, and other contact information. We update this yearly, and during this past presidential election, there were many changes. This one has over 50 changes that occurred since the national election last year. We have one for each of the council members and staff. I think you've got them good. The other They Represent You brochures are free at the Troy Library, the City Clerk's Office, the Troy Community Center, and the Friends of Troy Seniors. Kim replenishes them as they are depleted. They are also observable on our website, www.lwvTroyArea.org, and click on Troy, They Represent You. We would also like to thank the Troy Community Foundation for their recognition of our work by awarding us a grant to help to defray our printing and website costs. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you, Pam. Thanks for providing this for us. Thank you.
Good, enjoy.
There are no carryover items this evening, so next on the agenda is public hearings. We have one public hearing this evening. E1 is a reprogramming of the Community Development Block Grant, CDBG, program for the Year 2015 funds. I'll call upon Cindy Stewart, Community Affairs Director, to make this presentation.
Evening again.
Let me open the public hearing.
Good evening again. As you know, CDBG, we do different things based on what our -- the area of need, and we do the home tour for the seniors. In 2015, we had $60,000 left, and because the project was completed, so we are asking to move that money. So we're going to move it now to the Troy Farm to finish the -- or to complete the project to redo the barn's roof. And if we do not use our money, then we lose it, so that's why we have to reprogram it.
Thank you. Any questions for Cindy? I think it's well overdue to repair the roof on the farm. Is there anyone in the audience who wishes to speak on this evening -- this issue this evening? Seeing none, I will close the public hearing, return it to the table for resolution. Councilman Baker.
I'd like to move E1, Reprogramming Community Development Block Grant, CDBG, Program Year 2015 Funds as printed.
Support.
By Councilman Baker and supported by Councilman McCowen, that we approve E1, Reprogramming Community Development Block Grant, CDBG, Program Year 2015 Funds as printed in the agenda packet. Discussion? The vote, Ms. Dixon?
Mayor Slater.
Yes.
Councilmember Abraham.
Yes.
Councilmember Baker.
Yes.
Councilmember Henderson.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Hoderek.
Yes.
Councilmember McCown.
Yes.
Councilmember Pennington.
Yes.
Motion passes. Next on the agenda is public comment for items on the agenda from Troy residents and businesses. I see we have a number of residents that wish to speak this evening. Please pay attention to the agenda packet that contains the rules, our procedure for the city council. First, I will call on Padma Kupa, Troy resident, who wishes to speak on I4. Please be aware that there is a timer that turns green when your three minutes starts. When the yellow button lights up, you have about one minute. Please wrap up at that time for your three minutes. Good evening, Padma.
Good evening, council and community members and staff. I am Padma Kupa. I live at 4275 Marywood Drive, and I've lived in Troy nearly 20 years, close to 19 actually. On April 25 of this year, the Global Troy Advisory Committee passed a resolution to recommend that the Troy City Council affirm Troy as a welcoming city. Upon reviewing the principles of Welcoming America, which is the umbrella organization, I firmly agree with the GTAC's resolution that we should affirm who we are as a community and who we want to continue to be by joining the Welcoming City movement. I want to share a quick anecdote, a history from Troy's past, which has to do with houses of worship. Troy hosts the houses -- a number of houses of worship. One of the first Hindu temples in the state of Michigan, it's over 40 years old and one of the most acclaimed architecturally in the state. But this is actually about two Christian denominations several decades ago. One was a Methodist church, and this was when Catholics were relatively new to the city, and they didn't have a house of worship. And so the Methodist church welcomed their Catholic neighbors, and they became friends, and they actually worshipped in the same church, and it was known as St. Mary Methodist. So the welcoming nature of our community has not diminished and should not diminish. I came here as an immigrant, as a legal immigrant. I don't think that there is anything in the Welcoming America, Welcoming City initiative that would not go along with what I believe are legal means to showcase how embracing we are of our diversity. Diversity is a number. It is the embracing of that diversity that makes us who we are. And so I would like to recommend and encourage you all to consider to live out who we are by becoming a welcoming city. Thank you.
Thank you, Padma. Next, I'll call on Rebecca Chamberlain-Kringa, who wishes to speak on I4. Good evening, Rebecca.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. We all know that Troy, we are one of the most diverse cities in the state of Michigan in terms of our foreign-born residents. We all know that we are a welcoming city, and we are a city that celebrates diversity. But like any city around the country and around the globe, and I used to do much of this work around social inclusion when I worked at the World Bank, like all cities, there's always room to grow and develop in terms of best practices and understandings around inclusive policymaking and around equitable development. So I urge you tonight to consider becoming and joining the Welcoming Michigan and Welcoming America program. It puts us in a network that is both statewide and nationwide. It helps us both to learn from others as well share our stories of our successes, our best practices, helps us to elevate who we are as a city with the -- around the country and with our partners who care about these issues as we do. So I urge you to please to adopt this resolution so we can join Welcoming Michigan and Welcoming America. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, I'll call on Amina Alec, Troy resident, who wishes to speak on I4. Good evening.
Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. To be a welcoming city, this resolution seems like a no-brainer to me. I'm here to say that I support the resolution, and I encourage the city council to vote yes and to pass it tonight. And I see three main reasons to pass it, but I think the first one should be enough. The first, I'll call it a humanitarian reason. We are all human beings regardless of where we were born and deserve the same level of respect. Passing this resolution will be a clear sign that this city's leadership truly respects and values all of its citizens. The second and third are related. The second reason is that people of different backgrounds have something of great value to offer, and that is a different perspective. Passing this resolution and actively working on inclusivity rather than just diversity will tap into so many gifts and abilities that will benefit our entire community. This is how corporations evolve and succeed. This is how innovation happens. New group members bring different perspectives and new ideas that drive innovation and success. Troy's non-native population are those new group members. And if the first two aren't enough, then I will give you a third purely economic reason. I recently attended the 32nd Annual Oakland County Economic Forum here in Troy, and it's an annual forum where U of M economists present the outlook for the county for the next three years. And as a part of that analysis, they in detail discussed how the population of Oakland County, the native population of Oakland County, will be declining in the next 30 years. With a declining copulation, with the declining population comes a decline in economy. And in the summary, on page 25, and I'll use that as a reference, the summary states Oakland County's population would decline in the post-2018 period if it were not for the net international migration, and those are non-native members. So the way that I see it is that the only way the county and the city of Troy, being a part of that county, stays stable economically through that is through that international migration. And in order to attract the population that the Troy and the county need to maintain our economy, we need to become a welcoming city. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, I'll call on Larry Chiapelli, Troy resident, who wishes to speak on I4.
Good evening, Mayor.
Good evening.
After speaking with the people about the welcoming city, I guess I had a different interpretation of what I felt that I needed to speak about. So, you know, I -- I'm a businessperson in Troy, and a lot of times I have to reinvent myself every day, you know? And I feel like if we want to become a welcoming city, we have to reinvent ourselves every day, too. Look at it, look at things really hard. And part of that is I wanted to structure a meeting, and I got with Elaine, Elaine is it, in regards to fixing up Sylvan Glen Lake and various other places, and I felt that that was important for us as a city, to reinvent ourselves and change. And so as usual, I guess I'm just not really informative about what a welcoming city is in regards, so I don't really have too much to talk about other than trying to structure a meeting through Elaine for city council to consider things that I've been trying to talk about for the last two meetings.
Okay.
And that's it, and good luck with everything. Thanks.
Okay. Thank you, Larry. Next, I'll call on David Thomas, Troy resident, who wishes to speak on I4. Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor, council members. As I was on my way in, I understood that there'd be possibly some debate as to whether we would be a welcoming city or not, and I think the ladies ahead of me have talked eloquently about it. I just wanted to add that I've lived here 25 years, and I've been very proud of the ethnic and religious diversity. My children have all thrived in it, and we should certainly strive on maintaining that same and project ourselves as a welcoming city and make this the kind of place that everybody wants to live in like it is right now. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, I'll call on Marina Parakis, Troy resident, who wishes to speak on J6. Good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Troy City Council. My name is Mariana Parakis. You may remember that I sent you an email last week, and I just wanted to highlight a few points. As I'm sure you all understand, the development that we're talking about, Tolbrook versus city of Troy, the developer's trying to force the city to negotiate with him with the ultimate goal of a consent agreement so that he can proceed with some version of his proposed development. I'm urging you, the city council, to instruct the city attorney to dismiss the case and send a strong message to developers that they cannot successfully sue the city of Troy when they fail to abide by the city's ordinances. It's important that you protect the integrity of the legislative process when your decisions are made in good faith and consistent with the law. It should help you to know that the plaintiff has failed to state a legitimate claim. His due process rights have not been violated. He made a conditional rezoning request to city council and was denied. He came up two votes short because four of you determined that he failed to meet the requirements of the zoning ordinance. No judge should undermine your authority absent an arbitrary or capricious decision, which of course this was not. I also think it's important to remember that the plaintiff made false claims. It's hard to feel sorry for him when he alleges that he had no remedy, or he has no remedy. This developer purchased two homes which he's free to occupy. He can rent or sell them. He can also demolish them and build new single-family homes pursuant to the existing zoning laws which were in effect at the time he purchased the properties. The city has not frustrated the plaintiff's reasonable investment expectations. Any money that the plaintiff spent on his proposal was purely speculative, and it's the cost of doing business. Please instruct the city attorney's office, or better yet, consider hiring outside counsel to not only represent the case, the city in this case, but to ask that the case be dismissed as it has no legal merits, and also to collect attorney's fees to make this city whole again. And one last thing, I'm trying to understand why there's a discrepancy in the wording between the suggested resolution in item J5 on page 15 of tonight's agenda regarding the Troy Star Hospitality case against the city and the wording in J6, which is the Tolbrook case. The former authorizes the city attorney's office to represent the city, while in this case, the resolution limits the authorization to the city attorney. And perhaps more peculiar for me is that the city's attorney office is authorized in the Troy Star Hospitality case to quote "adequately represent the city." In the city's case, or the Tolbrook's case against the city, the authority is limited to paying the necessary costs and fees in the defense of the action. I'd like to hear in your discussions why the discrepancy in the resolutions. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, I'll call on Sandeep Savani, who wishes to speak on J6 also. Good evening.
Good evening. Thank you, Mr. Mayor and City Council. So I'll talk further to Mariana. As Mariana said in her talk and in her email, this lawsuit is completely frivolous. Doesn't have any merit. It essentially, if you look at the conditional rezoning case, it followed the same process and the same deliberation as you go through for all conditional rezoning cases. So it's just so that the builder is not happy with the result that the council thought in line with the city ordinance. This seems to be simply a ploy. This seems to be simply a ploy by the developer to negotiate with the city. So irrespective of what your individual opinions were when you did voting on this conditional rezoning, I think your opinion, or I, I hope that your opinion would be unanimous in this fact that the, this lawsuit is undermining the authority of the city council and undermining the city's ordinance. So if we negotiate on this lawsuit, it would set up a dangerous precedence. It will show the city's governance as weak and only invite more lawsuits for every new conditional rezoning from citizens or from, from developers. So I request you that you decide in your deliberations to vigorously defend this lawsuit, ask for dismissal and attorney's fees, and send a clear message to developers, citizens, and, and everybody that the city of Troy will not be bullied and will vigorously fight any frivolous challenges to the city ordinance and the city council's authority. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, I'll call on John Coolish, who wishes to speak on I four, Troy resident. Good evening, John.
Good evening. I rise today in support of agenda item I four, the resolution to make Troy a welcoming city. I'm going to put it in frame of reference of a word I learned recently, world schooling. We all know homeschooling. World schooling is parents taking the time off, six months to a year, to take their kids around the world to show it to them, to educate them to the world. Now, I recognize that not every parent or every person has the time, luxury, and money to go explore the world for a year. The second best thing we can do is bring the world to us. And I think this item does exactly that. I'm just, I'm sure you know it, I'm sure you've read it, but I'm going to quote the membership principles. Support a vision in which all people, including immigrants, have the opportunity to reach their potential, engage with their community, and fully contribute their talents, expanding prosperity and well-being for all. Work to build greater understanding, particularly among people who have many, who have concerns or are unaware of the changing demographics of their community. Operate with the conviction that better decisions are reached when multiple backgrounds are prospect, and perspectives are meaningfully engaged and strive to create an equitable and collaborative environment in which differences are embraced and harnessed to achieve the best results. This resolution is idealistic. It's, it's a rough world out there filled with sectarian strife and deep divisions. I could, I could use a, an idealistic act. I could use the hope that this resolution would bring to the city. Thank you.
Thank you, John. That concludes those that have signed up to speak on items on the agenda from Troy residents and businesses. Next on the agenda are postponed items. H one, a cooperative purchasing blanket resolution is a postponed item that has been removed by city administration, so we will move to regular business. I one, board and committee appointments. There are no appointments this evening from the mayoral appointment or city council appointments. I two, board and committee nominations. I would like to make two nominations this evening. And both of them are student nominations. I would like to nominate for student representation Caitlin Ho as the student representation, representative of the Global Troy Advisory Committee for the term that expires 7/31/2018. Moved by the chair, supported by Councilman Pennington, that we nominate Caitlin Ho for the student representation on the Global Troy Advisory Committee for the term that expires 7/31/2018. Discussion? The vote, Ms. Dixon.
Councilmember Abraham?
Yes.
Councilmember Baker?
Yes.
Councilmember Henderson?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Hoderek?
Yes.
Councilmember McCown?
Yes.
Councilmember Pennington?
Yes.
Mayor Slater?
Yes. Thank you for stepping forward for that important position. She'll be taking Ricky Young's spot, who is graduating June of 2017. He's done a great job as represent, representing the students on, on that committee. Can't thank Ricky enough for what he's done, not only on that committee, but for the city of Troy. Next, I would like to nominate Claire Howe for the student representative on the Planning Commission for the term that expires 7/31/2018.
Support.
Moved by the chair, supported by Councilman Henderson, that we nominate Claire Howe to the Planning Commission for the term that expires 7/31/2018. Discussion? The vote, Ms. Dixon.
Councilmember Baker?
Yes.
Councilmember Henderson?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Hoderek?
Yes.
Councilmember McCown?
Yes.
Councilmember Pennington?
Yes.
Mayor Slater?
Yes.
Councilmember Abraham?
Yes.
Motion passes. Thanks to Claire for volunteering again to be as the representative on the Planning Commission. She's done a great job. Any city council nominations? I'll defer to Mayor Protem Hoderek for city council nominations.
Thank you, Mayor. I have three nominations tonight off for the Charter Revision Committee. I would like to move that we reappoint Frank Howerlich and Cynthia Wilcher for their terms expiring April 30th, 2020. And I want to nominate for an open position, John Coolish, for the term expiring April 30th, 2018.
Moved by Mayor Protem Hoderek, supported by Councilwoman Abraham, that we nominate Frank Howerlich and Cynthia Wilcher to the Charter Revision Committee for the term that expires 2020, and John Coolish, that was also 2020?
2018.
2018, sorry. For the term that expires 2018, also to the Charter Revision Committee. The vote, Ms. Dixon.
Councilmember Henderson?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Hoderek?
Yes.
Councilmember McCown?
Yes.
Councilmember Pennington?
Yes.
Mayor Slater?
Yes.
Councilmember Abraham?
Yes.
Councilmember Baker?
Yes.
Motion passes. Thank you to those three who continue to volunteer. I three is a request for closed session. There is a request this evening. Would someone like to move that? Councilman Baker.
I'd like to move I three, closed session request resolved. The Troy City Council shall meet in closed session on May 22nd, 2017, in the council boardroom pursuant to MCL 15.268H, MCL 15.243G.
Support.
By Councilman Baker and supported by Councilman Pennington, that we approve I three, the closed session request, as printed and read into the record by Councilman Baker. Discussion? The vote, Ms. Dixon.
Mayor Protem Hoderek?
Yes.
Councilmember McCown?
Yes.
Councilmember Pennington?
Yes.
Mayor Slater?
Yes.
Councilmember Abraham?
Yes.
Councilmember Baker?
Yes.
Councilmember Henderson?
Yes.
Motion passes. I four, Becoming a Welcoming City. We have an introduction by Maggie Hughes, management analyst, and I see Sean Wolfski, our management assistant, here to introduce this. I know that Christine Savi is here to, to make the presentation, but good evening, Maggie.
Hi, good evening. Thank you, Mayor and City Council. So I'm going to kick off a double introduction really quickly, and that is to introduce you to our new management assistant, as the mayor said, Sean Wolfski. So Sean joined us in the next assistant program in the city manager's office a couple weeks ago, and we're really excited to have him, and he's taken on those responsibilities as staff liaison to Global Troy Advisory Committee. So I'm excited to work with him on this project, but I'll let him kick it off tonight.
Thank you. Good evening, Sean. Welcome to Troy.
Good evening. Good evening, Mayor and council members. So I know Maggie introduced you, but my name is Sean Wolfski, and I'm the new next management assistant and the staff liaison to the Global Troy Advisory Committee. And one of the reasons I'm very excited to begin working with this committee is for the reason I'm standing here today to speak on behalf of the Welcoming America and Welcoming Cities Initiative. So Welcoming America is an initiative designed to promote and create inclusive, more inclusive and, yeah, more inclusive communities for immigrants and refugees across the country. By joining the Welcoming America and Welcoming Michigan Initiative, Troy would not only be adding its name to an extensive list of cities across the nation, but would also be gaining access to a network of resources and information that would not only help the Global Troy Advisory Committee's goal, but the city's goal of creating a more culturally competent citizen population and ensuring equitable access to community resources for immigrants and refugees. So without further ado, I'd like to present Christine from Welcoming Michigan. She will be giving a presentation. Thank you.
Thank you, Sean. Good evening.
Great. Thank you so much for having me here tonight. I'll try and keep it brief since everyone has done half of my job for me this evening. So briefly, in short, the program, the Welcoming Cities and Counties program that you're looking at today is about working together with community partners to create an inclusive environment where everyone feels welcome. The program is specifically looking at the perspective from immigrants and refugees, but recognizing that in order to do that, we truly have to be building bridges and relationships between longtime residents and newcomers and creating a supportive environment for everyone in the community. So you, that number has since changed, actually. We now have 18 members in Michigan who are part of the program, and then there's another 80 nationally. So what Sean mentioned about being able to share tips and strategies and learn from other members, not only in Michigan, but also across the country, is very true. We help provide local technical assistance, as well as the staff from Welcoming America at the national level can provide assistance and tips as you're navigating new issues in the community, as policy issues emerge, or if you're looking for examples of programs that you'd like to replicate in the community that you've heard of other communities across the country or across the state doing. So some of the work that you might look at doing as a welcoming city, I've heard a lot of great things that you're already doing. So some of it will be building on that success or celebrating that success, or it might be looking at which areas you haven't engaged in yet and thinking about going into some, some new projects where there's interest or, or where it maps over onto work that you're already looking at. So some of the work is looking, is focused on longtime residents. Some of it's looking at the approach from the newcomer point of view. And then I, I know Troy has a great reputation as already having a global welcoming profile, but what other programs or additional ways of presenting yourself as a city could, could assist with that? That falls into the first category. Ensuring equitable access has been mentioned this evening. Things like looking at language access, translation could fall into that category. Expanding education and economic opportunity, building leadership, again, on both sides of that equation of longtime residents and newcomers, and then making sure everyone feels connected and supported and knows how to communicate with one another. So this is just a sampling of some of the community partners that might be involved in this work. So I encourage you not to think of it as a wholly new program, because a lot of it is probably going to map over again onto things that you're already engaged in. A lot of the partnerships that you see up here, and again, this is not exhaustive, so I know I'm leaving people out, but just to give you an idea of, you know, the nonprofit communities, partners that could be involved, faith community partners in, in addition to the library and the civic partners that you probably already are deeply engaged with. Again, the membership principles, thank you to the resident who so kindly reiterated those for me, and they're also in your packet. So I think I've heard many attest to the fact that Troy is already committed to those principles, so that is part of the equation right there. So I'll hold for any questions you have.
Thank you, Christine. I know the, all of the information was in the packet presented, and was pretty self-explanatory as to what this is all about. Any specific questions from council for Christine this evening? I think we got it.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm going to move I four, Becoming a Welcoming City, and I think I'd like to read the proclamation into the record because I think it, it kind of tells really what, what the city of Troy is and, and what we're about. This is really, in my opinion, a proclamation just reinforcing what Troy is today anyways. So whereas fostering a welcoming environment for all individuals regardless of race, ethnicity, or place of origin enhances the city of Troy's cultural fabric, economic growth, global competitiveness, and overall prosperity for current and future generations. And whereas Troy has long been recognized as a hospitable and welcoming place where people, families, and institutions thrive, and the contributions of all are celebrated and valued. And whereas Troy is committed to continuing to build a welcoming and inclusive atmosphere in our community, where all are welcome, accepted, and integrated. And whereas, community efforts to promote understanding and collaboration between our native-born and foreign-born community members are crucial in encouraging and preserving Troy's welcoming environment. And whereas Troy encourages the business leadership, civic groups, other government agencies, and community institutions to undertake their own initiatives beyond this resolution to make Troy not only a welcoming place for new residents from other countries, but also a center of world commerce. Now therefore be it resolved that the Troy City Council, upon encouragement of the Global Troy Advisory Committee, does hereby recognize the Welcoming Troy Initiative as helping to unite our community and ensure that all are welcome here. We urge all residents of Troy to do his or her part to reach out and welcome all who live in and visit our city. Moved by the chair and supported by Councilman McCowen, that we approve I four as printed and read into the record this evening. Any further discussion? It's always an indicator when there's no questions that you've done a great, great job in making your presentation. The vote, Ms. Dixon.
Councilmember McCown?
Yes.
Councilmember Pennington?
Yes.
Mayor Slater?
Yes.
Councilmember Abraham?
Yes.
Councilmember Baker?
Yes.
Councilmember Henderson?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Hoderek?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion passes. Thanks for all your hard work. Sean, at one of these meetings, we'll have to have you introduce your, your background, your educational background. It's pretty impressive. I five is next, the amended and restated Automation Alley Smart Zone Agreement, an introduction by city manager Brian Kishnik.
Thank you, Mayor, City Council. Normally, I would not be the one introducing this. I would let Mark Miller introduce and give the presentation, but I've told Mark for about two weeks now, he's not going to introduce it. I am, and here's the reason. Mark Miller has been working on this project to the, to exhaustion, not of himself, of all of us. Listening to him at every meeting, give us an update, give us, sometimes he's driving the car, sometimes he's riding in the car, sometimes he's pushing the car, sometimes he's pulling the car. He was in the ditch a couple of times. This is an unbelievable project that is, has critical importance to the city of Troy and the LDFA and the Automation Alley Smart Zone. So that is my entire introduction. I'm going to let Mark take it from there, but he is, he is the one who has taken this, and sometimes this stuff gets lost in the minutia of everyday work. He's, he's, he's the reason this is where we are at.
I agree. Mark, is it four?
Yes, Mayor, Council, I've been working on this for four years.
Four years.
Yes. And in that four-year period, I mean, there were times when I thought this would just die, even after we had our, the council approved the LDFA plan. So what's before you tonight is the amended and restated Automation Alley Agreement, and the resolution is to authorize the mayor and clerk to execute that. Southfield City Council is going to do the same. I would also state that the LDFA is kind of confusing because the only way Troy could get the LDFA back in 2002, 2003 was get the LDFA back in two thousand two, two thousand three was to, to create a joint LDFA with South, the city of Southfield. So, there is a joint LDFA, and then there are two subcommittees, there's the Southfield Subcommittee and our Troy Subcommittee. And our Troy Subcommittee is what does the tax capture. So, this, um, this, by executing this agreement with the MEDC, you, we will get a fifteen-year extension of the Local Development Finance Authorities, Certified Technology Park, and the Automation Alley Smart Zone. Um, it, so, it goes out an additional fifteen-year period to two thousand thirty-four. The plan set forth sixty percent of the capture goes to Automation Alley for operations and furnishing the building for the accelerator, and also, foundation membership is included that. Forty percent of the tax capture goes to, um, city administration for the administrative costs, obviously, and then for infrastructure improvements that service the, uh, the, um, Smart Zone, Automation Alley Smart Zone, and an example of that is the Move Across Troy project that's coming up. And also, what it's done is it's forced us to collaborate more with the city of Southfield and Automation Alley, and now we have even Lawrence Tech involved, and they're working with the satellite in Port Huron, and because of the satellite in Port Huron, it allows us to get this fifteen-year extension. So, this, this is the final act that, by executing this, and we have fifteen more years, and, um, the final point is the whole reason why the LDFA was created jointly was to be the home of Automation Alley. And I think that it's fantastic that the city of Troy is sort of like the, we create the huge economic impact, what Automation Alley does, it is because we created the LDFA.
Great. Thank you, Mark. I, I can't thank you enough for what, what you've done to work on this. I know, uh, I am, um, an alternate on the LDFA, and I know all the work that you've put into this, so thanks, thanks on behalf of, uh, the council for your work. I know Mayor Protem Hoderek also sits on the board as an alternate, and she's at more meetings than I am, I know that, but, um, um, thank you, Mark. Any questions for Mark on this item? Somebody like to move the resolution? Mayor Protem Hoderek?
Mayor, I'll move I five, I could read it, but it's really long, so I'll move I five as printed, if that's sufficient.
Sure. Thank you.
Support.
Moved by Mayor Protem Hoderek and supported by Councilman Baker that we approve I five, the amended and restated Automation Alley Smart Zone Agreement as printed in the agenda packet. Further discussion? Mayor Protem Hoderek?
Um, I'd really like to thank also our Chair, Robin Beltramini of the LDFA, I think she was here a little bit ago, I don't know if she's still here, but, um, her leadership with this group has been just solid. Um, anyone who knows her would expect nothing less from her, and the partnerships with Southfield and whatnot necessitated sometimes last-minute, if you will, meetings, where people really working together to do right by this, um, and we really do benefit tremendously. Um, it, it's a great example of, of the power of collaboration, patience, and, um, a solid staff that really worked hard to make this happen, so, thank you. What it means to residents, we talk about the Move Across Troy, there's an area on Big Beaver that's more on the east side, and we often hear from residents talking about, what about us over here, um, because it's a little bit outside the DDA, and, um, this, this does bring improvements there to the walkability, to the looks of that median, and, um, so, so that's what it means in brass tacks in terms of, of our residents and businesses down there, there will be tangible, visible, um, evidence of a positive impact of this here, um, even as the economic accelerator goes on with Automation Alley, um, so we all benefit, it's a, one of those win-win-win-win-win-all-over-the-place things, so, thank you.
Any comments? The vote, Ms. Dixon?
Councilmember Pennington?
Yes.
Mayor Slater?
Yes.
Councilmember Abraham?
Yes.
Councilmember Baker?
Yes.
Councilmember Henderson?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Hoderek?
Yes.
Councilmember McCown?
Yes.
Motion passes. Thanks again, Mark. Next on the agenda is the consent agenda, any item council wishes to pull this evening? Councilman Baker?
Like to pull J six.
Any other items this evening? Councilman Henderson?
Like to move all items on the consent agenda, with the exception of J six, which we'll discuss.
It's my understanding that, um, we are going to move to closed session and then come back into session and vote on J six. That's, that's the request?
That is the request. I actually have one further request, if, if there could be clarification as to the discrepancy between J five and J six, the wording, if you can speak to that.
Thank you for the opportunity to do that. Um, frankly, it's, it's just two different assistant city attorneys who drafted the memos and drafted the resolutions, and, and, uh, they say the same thing. Certainly, our office will continue to represent the city as aggressively and assertively as we do in every other case.
Thank you. Uh, there is a motion on the table to approve all consent agenda items with the exception of J six, which will be voted on after closed session this evening. Is there a second?
I think Councilmember Abraham supported.
Did you support that?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Moved by Councilman Henderson, supported by Councilwoman Abraham, that we approve all consent agenda items as presented with the exception of J six, which will be voted on after closed session this evening. Discussion? The vote, Ms. Dixon?
Mayor Slater?
Yes.
Councilmember Abraham?
Yes.
Councilmember Baker?
Yes.
Councilmember Henderson?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Hoderek?
Yes.
Councilmember McCown?
Yes.
Councilmember Pennington?
Yes.
Motion passes. If you are here this evening, all of the consent agenda items were passed this evening, J six will be voted on after closed session, which comes at the end of the, the meeting this evening. Once we have closed session, we will come back into this council chambers, and we will vote on J six. Next on the agenda are memorandums and future council agenda items, there are none this evening. So, next is public comment for items not on the agenda from Troy residents and businesses. I see Larry Chiappelli, Troy resident, did you wish to speak at this point?
No.
Thank you. There is one council referral and one this evening, a request from Councilmember Dave Henderson to schedule a joint meeting with Detroit City Council and Planning Commission. I will defer to Councilman Henderson.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, I, I put a note to all council members just to kinda let you know where my thoughts were, and I, I don't wanna read the whole thing, um, but, um, as we watched the Planning Commission meeting the other night, uh, there was some frustration and question in their minds about, you know, what it is, what our directives are, you know, where are we heading as a, uh, a planning city? And, uh, also, uh, the mayor had made mention that, um, um, you know, maybe we need to knock heads a little bit with the Planning Commission to, to try to, to reset. Every two years, we get a new, new set of council members, and, um, our, our, the people in our city, developers, uh, and residents as well, uh, deserve fairness and consistency when we, when we deal with projects. So, uh, I think it's, it's a good idea. The, the Planning Commission, uh, had suggested that maybe it, it should be longer than just the, the forty-five minutes of rigorous conversation we usually get before a council meeting, and I don't think that's necessarily a bad idea, um, so, you know, we, we have to do some planning to try to get that, but I would suggest that we, we get this done as quickly as possible, um, in light of the last two developments that, that have been turned down, so. That's it.
Support. Thank you. Thank you. Um, I think the important part of this is trying to find a date that, um, that might, uh, work with everyone. I totally agree, Councilman Henderson, that there is a need to meet with, um, the Planning Commission, and I think we need to meet, um, for more than forty-five minutes also. I think we need to dedicate, uh, a couple hours at least, um, to a study session outside, outside of the Monday that we meet, um, for, for council. My suggestion would, would be to look for some dates, maybe right next to a city council meeting. Um, generally, like the budget, we'll meet on, sometimes on Tuesday of that week, um, and it might, instead of trying to look for dates at the table, it might be good maybe if, if we could get some dates to the city manager that would work for each of us, and then communicate with the Planning Commission, and, and kinda leave it up to staff to try and put something together after communicating with everyone. But is, does that sound like a good suggestion if there's consensus to, to meet with, um, Planning Commission? Uh, Councilman Henderson?
Can we, can we try to pinpoint it to June? I mean, May's almost over, right, so?
Good luck with that.
Yeah. Good, though, I, I think this is rather, uh, we, we have a lot of things in the, in the pipeline, and I think it's rather an urgent, um, conversation that we need to have.
I know, but I, I, I know the summers are, are difficult to get to, to get nine from the Planning Commission and seven from the city council, so.
Mayor, I was just gonna recommend, can we, can we at least hone it into a Monday?
Can we what?
Keep it restricted to a Monday, give us dates, uh, non-council meeting Mondays.
You mean the alternate week?
Yeah.
Mayor, I also had a thought, if, if it has to be attached to a regular meeting, if we had a very specific, if we could only do the hour and ten, and then do it two times, but with a very specific set of discussion points, so it's not, I mean, maybe the first ones that does free-fall, free-fall, free-for-all discussion of what we need to work on, and then with the next meeting, if we have a trouble selecting a date, can be very specific action items to keep it more on track, and just throwing out options here.
We'll do our best to come up with a date, if everyone gets it to us, and that may be, that may be a solution.
I, I think that's probably a, a good idea, not to try and just have all of it on one night where maybe you, you do some talking and then hone into, uh, a specific area, sounds reasonable to me, too. I, I still think you can need to do it for more than one hour before a council meeting. Mayor Protem Hoderek?
Um, one thought I'm having is, it seems that we need, um, perhaps a fresh review of the zoning ordinance, um, and an understanding of, of what our local law says, um, that's the test I'm using, um, that I believe we're directed to use, and maybe the confusion is, is a broad understanding of exactly what that ordinance is saying to us. So, that, that might be one, uh, topic that we could put there. We've had, in my experience here, um, I've been involved in approving two conditional rezonings, and I've had a couple that I've voted no on, um, I think that's how the democratic process goes and how the process works, so it's, um, that review of the process and how it unfolds, I think would be helpful for, so that we're all singing from the same hymn book in that, in that regard.
Councilman Henderson?
So, one of my frustrations with this, and I, I'm sure I can speak for the developers as well, is it seems that the process that we have, the, you know, the, Tolbrook, for example, uh, the elephant in the room, they started talking about this project over a year ago, had considerable expense through the entire year, and then at the eleventh hour, the project gets turned down. It seems to me that somewhere along the line, we could have saved that developer a lot of money had we had a different process, and it is, I don't know what that process is, I don't know what it looks like, I don't know how we, how we accomplished that, but I think that's the conversation that I would like to have. It's unfair for somebody to come into the city of Troy, find a nice piece of property that can be developed, and there aren't that many of them left, and, and then come into all sorts of hurdles that we just can't overcome ultimately at the end, and then they've expended all this, uh, these finances. So, I think that's, that's my frustration, and, and I think we, if we can come up with some creative way to get around, that would be good.
Any other comments? Well, I have a lot of comments, but I think it would be more appropriate during a discussion with the Planning Commission, um, I share some frustration that, that I was listening to at the Planning Commission at the last, um, um, meeting that they had. I think there, from this council table, there needs to be more discussion with plant, with developers at the table, and I haven't seen that from this council in quite a while, and that's one of the things that I think needs to be addressed, um, and, um, needs to be talked about. So, um, I think there's a lot of things that need to be discussed, and we need to set some time aside to, to, to talk about it. And, uh, Mr. Kishnik, I think, um, we'll rely on you to come up with some dates that, that will work.
We'll do that.
Having knowing that this is the summer. Okay. Thank you for advancing that, uh, Councilman Henderson, thank you. Next is council comments, any other comments from council this evening? Call, Mayor Protem Hoderek?
Um, I just wanted to congratulate, uh, the police department for an outstanding open house event on Saturday. There seemed to be the whole community flowing through, uh, for tours and, and to see what was going on. I mentioned, um, to the chief earlier today, there was one little boy, he must've been about seven years old, standing there in his hoodie that said NYPD, waiting for a tour, went through the tour and was standing just lit up like a Christmas tree, and I asked him if he enjoyed his visit, and he said yes, and I said, do you think you would like to be a police officer someday? And he said, I've wanted to be one my whole life. And, um, I said, well, we need really quality people working in the law enforcement profession, and, uh, I, I'm glad you enjoyed your visit today. There, there was a tremendous amount of diversity coming through the doors to seek understanding of our police department, and I think you said there was close to a thousand people that came through, um, so, my congratulations to members of the community who took the time to do that and take advantage of an opportunity to learn about one of the most important aspects of our city, and that's how we keep one another safe.
Thank you. Any other comments from council? Any comments from council on the reports this evening that were contained in the agenda I don't see that anyone has signed up for comments on items, on or not on the agenda, from members of the public outside of Troy. We do have a closed session request, so we will take a break for about five minutes, reconvene in the boardroom for the closed session, and then we will be back in this room to address J six. Thank you for coming, and unfortunately, I can't tell you exactly how long the closed session is gonna be, but we will be back here at some point to address J six. Thank you. Okay, we are back in session after our closed session, um, and I will recall J six and defer to Councilman Baker at this point?
Like to move J six, Tolbrook LLC v. City of Troy as printed.
Support.
Moved by Councilman Baker and supported by Councilman Pennington that we approve J six as printed, Tolbrook LLC v. City of Troy. Discussion? I just wanna make a comment that I am gonna vote in support of this because I do not want the, um, the city to be in default, uh, and I don't think that's the way that we should proceed, so I will be voting yes. The vote, Ms. Dixon?
Councilmember Abraham?
Yes.
Councilmember Baker?
Yes.
Councilmember Henderson?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Hoderek?
Yes.
Councilmember McCown?
Yes.
Councilmember Pennington?
Yes.
Mayor Slater?
Yes. Motion passes. That concludes the, um, agenda for this evening. Thank you, everyone that's still here, for your patience. We are adjourned.